I'd like to call the board meeting to order. Please, if you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone and welcome everyone who's watching from home. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Present.
Trustee Gatt?
Present.
Trustee Kazam?
Present.
Trustee Goff?
Present.
Trustee Wigington?
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Present.
All right, we will be at item four, approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on April 9th, I'm sorry, April 19th, 2022. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or corrections to the minutes or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. We would be at correspondence. Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
Yes, I do have a thank you note here. It reads as follows. Mayor Phelan and Village Board members, I want to sincerely thank you for last Tuesday evening. The proclamation you read was beautiful. You captured Raj perfectly. Also, the Rajabergia Way sign to be hung on Glenn Avenue left us speechless. We, as a family, are so very honored by the tribute. When you asked me to speak into the microphone, I went blank and truly hope my words conveyed how very grateful we are. To you and your board members, we are so blessed to be honored this way. To see his name when driving on Glenn Avenue will always be very special to us. Thank you for making wonderful memories. Val Bergian, family.
Is that all, Madam Clerk?
That's all.
Okay, we would be at comments from the audience. If anyone is here tonight to address the board, please come forward to the podium and give your name and address and try and keep your remarks under five minutes.
My name's Steve Kerr with Moore &amp; Kerr Engineering, and I'm here today to represent the Country Club of Peoria. I have some comments on the Lake Avenue Water Main Project, and I didn't know if you wanted me to wait until that agenda item came up or you want me to speak now.
I'll give you all the latitude you want, either here or when we get to that point. I probably wouldn't let everyone speak. Ask for one spokesman when we get to the resolution, but you're all free to address the board right now, so.
Well, I'll be the only one speaking unless there's other comment.
Okay, so I think it'd be best if you don't mind, let's wait till we get to that point and you can join us in the dialogue. Anyone else here to address the board tonight? Scott, welcome.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Scott Korsat. I'm the commander of the General Wayne A. Downing American Legion Post 1111 in Peoria Heights, right over here in the Centennial Building. And I think probably most of you know we leased that building from the village and have for some time. Just a little background on that, our post was started in around 2009. We didn't have the money for a building or anything such like that, so we started meeting in the back of the Pizza Works. And then after that, we met at the VFW here in the Heights as well. In 2012, then Mayor Allen asked us if we could work something out with the village. Would we be interested in leasing the Centennial Building as a place to meet? And I said, absolutely, we'd love to do that. At the time, I think the Chamber of Commerce used it as well. Now we share it with Public Works and the Water Department. So, a few weeks ago at one of our monthly meetings, a member asked if our lease was up. And we're all like, no, we didn't think it had been five years already. Well, it's been five years already. It went rather quickly. And so, we looked at the lease, it was up this last February. And we have loved being able to have a meeting place up there. It's been really convenient for us. We meet once a month at Monday at 6:30, so we don't use it a lot, but when we do, it's greatly appreciated. And I'm just here to represent the Legion tonight and ask if it will be possible for us to renew our lease.
All right, thank you for being here. We're gonna get to that soon if there are any questions, Scott. We'll call you back up, but thanks. We're proud to have you here in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Rick.
Hello. I'm here to address one of the agenda items about the use of Tower Park for our annual concert in August. So, that's an agenda item. I'll wait if you have any questions at that time.
Thought maybe you were confused and thought this was Monday night.
No, I was here last night.
Anyone else? Hi.
I'm here for the same, just to.
Anyone want to address the board that's not on the agenda? Public comment going once, twice? Comments from the audience close? We be at old business? Any old business coming for the board? Hearing none, we'll get right into new business. So, we have a consent agenda tonight. There are two items on the consent agenda. This is somewhat new to us, so counsel, I'm going to say that if anyone ever wants to pull anything from the consent agenda, they would just make that request and I would grant it. Anything else?
That's correct.
All right. So, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
What's the consent agenda? How's it different than what we've done?
I move to.
It covers both items. It covers both items instead of individually voting on.
Okay. Oh, I see, I see.
So, I believe this was in ordinance we recently passed, and any routine business like approval of Tower Park, that's done annually, but anyone can pull anything off at any time.
I understand.
So, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, and a second?
Second.
Okay, before we get into discussion, you were here to discuss the Tower Park event, Rick, so you're both welcome to come back, please.
So, I sent a letter requesting use of Tower Park, same type of letter we send every year. So, this is the, gosh, I think it's the 20th annual concert that we've had in Tower Park. Christian concert, we get a, the church signs a well-known Christian artist every year, has the concert. We have, it's really, the event goes from about 5:00 in the evening till about 8:00 in the evening. Music stops probably by 7:00. We do block off kind of the parking areas on both sides so we can have all ones serve some food and the concert goers can buy t-shirts and that sort of thing. So, that's our event. And if you have any other questions?
Thank you. It's always a well-run, well-attended event. We appreciate you having here.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Strasna. And similar, my husband and I, we lead worship in Peoria for like the past 20 years, and we've been at Peoria Heights Congregational Church across the street several times. And ours is like half the size. But we would request permission to use Tower Park Pavilion, and thank you for designing it and building it and sharing it because it is so much fun. For the last probably five or six years, we've been having more of a local worship concert. And we do not need to block off anything. It's maybe a couple of booths for t-shirts and that kind of informational stuff.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, we would be at approval of ordinance 2022-1674, an ordinance authorizing the non-exclusive lease of the first floor of the Centennial Building with the Wayne A. Downing Post 111, American Legion owned by the Village of Peoria Heights. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-1674.
And a second, please.
Second.
Go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
So, like we've been told, the Legion has been using this, and so what you see in front of you, this ordinance would renew their lease for a period of 39 months, and that would be like in concession with the mayor's term. So, I think this is great that we allow them to use that, and I would strongly encourage that we would move forward with extending their lease for the next 39 months.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, how much is the lease?
Not very much, a dollar.
Okay, no, that's fine. What I was curious about is, so we lease it to them, but then we still use the building?
Yes.
For Public Works?
There's an office above that's used occasionally. Jim, how often do you use that office?
We actually are in the upstairs office very rarely. The main floor is where our water control system is.
Right. Is there even a need for a lease? Why can't they just use it? It seems overly complicated.
Well, I think then we'd have to. This counsel, you'll help me out here.
We chose long ago to formalize the arrangements so that they were comfortable that they.
It identifies expectations.
It does, it does.
It's for security for them.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. If you're ready for the question, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Scott. Appreciate having you as a tenant.
We would be at approval of ordinance 2022-1675, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a Business Development District Number One redevelopment agreement by and between the Village of Peoria Heights and Kathleen Faletti, Immaculate Bolios Ice Cream and Faletti LLC, 4534 North Prospect Road, and Ryan Clark doing business as W.E. Sullivan's Irish Pub and Fair, and 4538 Prospect LLC, 4538 North Prospect Road.
Trustee Kazam, I would ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-1675.
And a second, please.
Second.
All right, go ahead, Trustee Kazam.
This is a request to use BDD beautification funds by two different separate entities in the Village of Peoria Heights, both Immaculate Bolios and Sullivan's. They intend to remove and replace the sidewalk between their different businesses, and both businesses participate and add to the BDD 1% tax and are in the district. I think their actual funds that they intend to put out are $11,550, and they're asking for $8,653 in reimbursement, which is a 75% reimbursement.
Questions for Trustee Kazam? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of ordinance 2022-1676, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a Business Development District Number Two redevelopment agreement by and between the Village of Peoria Heights and Dr. Keith A. Peterson, DVM, doing business as Prospect Animal Clinic and K Peterson Enterprises Incorporated, 4015 North Prospect Road. Trustee Kazam, I would ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-1676.
And a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Trustee Kazam.
This actually came before us in the past, but they, it's actually expired, so it's the exact same request that came before us in the past. We voted yes, and it's just returned to us again.
Any questions or discussion?
Yes, Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Trustee Kazam, I was looking at this, you said it was just, it expired. Now, this looks like it is a different type of request. The last request was under the beautification and facade program, and this looks a little bit different. Is that correct?
As far as I know, it's the same and it has expired, but I'm gonna defer to Administrator Sutton in this case.
Mr. Aldrich, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're going on a case-by-case basis now as far as that program goes, the beautification program. It expired, Trustee Wigington, so now we're going on an individual basis as far as the redevelopment agreement for each application. Is that correct, Wayne?
Yes.
Okay. So, it is actually the same, but you are correct, the document does probably look different because it's a redevelopment agreement, and it's a little bit different than the previous application you're accustomed to.
And then, just a couple of additional things. Now, is Dr. Peterson, is he, you know, I know it's a little bit, calling the kettle black here because COVID has me down and out, but is Dr. Peterson present?
He's not.
And the request remains the same, the $10,000 that was requested in January of this year?
I believe so, for the exterior beautification of the building for peeling paint and siding.
Yes.
Okay, well, I will have to say, and I think I said this the last time this came up, is I am still in opposition to the use of BDD funds for businesses that do not pay into the BDD program. I know it sounds like a broken record, but I want to just make sure that the reason for my no vote is documented. I think that the program does a lot of good things, and like we've said before, when we raise, we can raise all votes with this, but I think being present at the meeting, I think that was some of the issues we had at the last time when asking for $10,000. Obviously, he's not here again, and I just don't agree with the use of funds for this type of project, so I'm gonna be in opposition to this again, but I appreciate their determination in bringing this package to the board.
All right, thank you. I do believe they pay something.
They do pay into the BDD, Trustee Wigington, it's just a minimal amount. We talked about that last time, if you remember right. The items are very minimal as far as what's actually BDD eligible.
But they pay into the BDD.
But they do.
That's the point.
I think the last time we talked about it, we couldn't locate any sales of shampoo or, you know, things that have been paid into the BDD previously. That was my recollection, but maybe I was wrong about that.
So, I also last time opposed this because the company requesting the charity was not here to receive or even ask us for it, which I think if you're gonna ask the board for money, you should at least show up. With the BDD program expiring, how is it being funded? I thought the BDD program authorized the 1%. What?
The program isn't expiring, the application that expired, that program expired, but the actual BDD program itself is still intact. I'll let Wayne speak to that if he wants to go into depth, but nothing, the application has changed. That's it.
The process has changed, the procedure.
Correct. So, what actually expired there?
BDD, not the program, and that program is expiring.
Did the program authorize the 1% or did?
No.
No.
No, the beautification.
That's the creation of the statue, that still remains, the 1% remains.
Okay. All right, so this isn't financed with the TIF, this is still the BDD?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Nay.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Nay.
All right, that passes. On to approval of ordinance 2022-1677, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement by and between the Village of Peoria Heights and War Memorial and Monroe LLC. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-1677.
And a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Trustee Kazam.
This is a TIF agreement that we have designed between the LLCs. Now, actually, counsel will correct, make some corrections, Ward Drive LLC and the Village of Peoria Heights for a proposed development. I don't know the parcel, I know it's Greg's florist, what's the act?
Just today, I was presented by Steve Klein and Nick Nelson with the request to change, that the name as presented was War Memorial and Monroe LLC. They actually formed an LLC in Delaware with the name Ward Drive LLC, same owner behind the LLC, so they just wanted to change that name, and Steve and Nick had no concern about that. The only other change, and I put a revised ordinance and agreement, I believe each of you should have received that, that was prepared by Nick Nelson this afternoon. The only other change was the, obviously in the notice section, the entity is identified for receiving notice as Ward Drive LLC.
So, the percentage is the same, it's just the entity?
Nothing, substantively, nothing changed. It was only the name of the developer.
Thank you.
Wayne, I'm gonna go to you next to set this up, please.
Sure. Again, this is the northeast corner of Ward Drive and Monroe, so development on that site. This is proposed to be a convenience store, gas station with six pumps at that location. Business terms of the agreement, this is a TIF agreement, so, and this is typical of some of the other business terms as far as TIF agreements the board has approved. In this case, it's a little bit different because there is an intersection improvement. So, because of that, the developer will have, I would call it an upfront cost for the improvements to the intersection. So, the first two years of this agreement as far as TIF will be 100% reimbursement of the net TIF increment. So, after that, it will go to a 75% reimbursement for the life of the TIF. The total eligible TIF expenses for this are about $2,120,000. The intersection is anticipated this time to be about $120,000 reimbursement from this developer at 50% of the cost of the intersection. This agreement agrees, the village agrees to an alley vacation, and that's subject of the next agenda item, and we'll also have to go through all the zoning approvals as appropriate. Those are the basic business terms. Mr. Michael Segetti, attorney for the developers here, if you have any other questions. Have to answer questions if I can.
All right, who'd like to start?
Didn't we already vacate that alley?
No.
We made a verbal agreement.
Yeah, okay.
There was a request too earlier, Trustee Weisenberg. I wasn't gonna do that until we knew the business behind Mr. Segetti's client and what their plans were for the property, the site, so we postponed that until tonight, so.
And do we know the business behind it?
Wayne?
We do not know. The developer hasn't, probably is still negotiating with the franchisee for the property.
But we know the concept, and I think we have, Wayne and counsel, I'm looking at you, I think we have a great deal of comfort level here.
Yes.
Anyone else?
This is, go ahead. Thank you, Trustee DeVore, and I'm sorry to interrupt. I just had a couple of questions, and I'll move through this pretty quickly. First question is to Village Council, Mark, are we okay as far as the Open Meetings Act, as far as the, you know, just the minimalist change in the agenda as far as posting requirements?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. And as far as the, I think, Wayne, you mentioned the, this was subject to the vacation ordinance of the alley, I think which is later on the agenda. The vacation, I just wanted to, I was just curious of how does it set up? Because it looks like we're vacating to not necessarily the party subject to the TIF agreement, but yet maybe to an existing property owner. So, I was just wondering how those two interact to each other.
One of the conditions in the vacation ordinance, you'll find it in Section 2, there's payment of compensation, which is, you know, relatively negligible, but also the vacation does not become effective until title transfers to that new owner. So, until you have a single owner in title on both sides of the alley, the ordinance will not become effective.
Okay, okay. So, I know I'm skipping ahead to the following ordinance, but so, for the sake of cleanliness, we have a, we have a party in that vacation ordinance, just as a kind of a placeholder? Is that my understanding?
That is correct. It was drafted before we knew the entity that was gonna be taking title, and, you know, again, until, we wanted the ordinance to be adopted before the transaction closed, so it needed to identify the current title holders on either side of the alley.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, thank you for allowing me to, I did, on trusty support. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Trustee Wigington. Go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
Okay, so, for the two years at 100% reimbursement for this, that is only up to $120,000, which is what we're assuming the cost is for them to do the road in turn lane situation, right?
That's correct.
So, if they make that $120,000 faster than it would, faster than the two years, then it would drop to 75%?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Wayne, I'm gonna look at you again and just elaborate on the importance of motor fuel tax money coming to the village and sales tax and some jobs, I assume, here.
Sure. You know, this is a great development for War Memorial Drive. I mean, it's, that's where, I don't know what the traffic count is, but you know it's heavy there. So, folks, sales tax certainly, which is the prime revenue source for the village, as well as motor fuel tax. So, the village collects motor fuel tax as well as the state collects motor fuel tax. And there, the motor fuel tax the village collects, we can directly spend that money on road improvements. The state also collects that, we get a percentage, you know, based on our population of the motor fuel tax that we collect from the state. So, a very good development as far as other revenue sources for the village. So, from that standpoint, you know, again, a very good location for this particular use.
Mr. Segetti, anything you'd like to say to the board tonight?
Not really, other than we appreciate your support, and having worked with staff, we've been working on this for quite a while, and happy to be to this point and moving forward with it.
I think both Wayne and Dustin were getting tired of me asking about the status of this for a long time, so thank you for finally bringing it to a conclusion. We're looking forward to your project.
Thank you.
If you're ready for the question, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of ordinance 2022-1678, an ordinance providing for the vacation of alley. And it didn't really, it's not specific on the agenda, but I hope we all know we're talking about this as a vacation of the alley at, on War Memorial Drive.
It's only up as far north as those property lines or the current, you know, here, parcel that's been sold for this level.
Okay.
And Greg Forrest on the other side.
Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve, second.
All right. Trustee DeVore, anything you want to say here that hasn't been said?
I don't think so.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
When we vacate an alley like that, there's sanitary sewer in that alley. Is there easement rights? What happens to that sanitary?
I'm gonna ask Wayne to answer that.
I don't think there's any service utilities in this alley, but if, if there are, those, those rights still remain unless there's a vacation of the utilities.
Okay. And then I guess that was my, my question, is sanitary sewer that runs, pretty sure runs down that alley. The manhole would be in the central part of the alley. I don't think that part's being vacated, but the actual structure underneath would still be there and still may require some, some maintenance at some future date. Hopefully, hopefully not, but it's possible. I'm just wondering what's available for that.
Yes.
And just for clarification, the, the ordinance is, we're vacating the alley, subject to all of the existing public utility easements. So we, you're, you're correct, we're not vacating those easements. They'll remain in place.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
And one quick thing after Trustee Goff. So, and obviously the sanitary easement doesn't even belong to the village, so we don't even have the right to do anything with that. For the nature of this project, my only concern was underground, you know, sanitary lines, maybe water line. Would that present a problem? Hopefully not to the developer. But, you know, if we have fuel tanks that need to be played, obviously they can't go there.
Again, there's an easement that can't, yeah, the, they would have to renegotiate an easement or something like that, but the developer's aware of these easements in their site planning process.
And that would really be an issue with the developer owner.
Exactly.
Not the village.
Yes.
It's a construction issue. The easements are encountered all the time during construction and you negotiate them or contest or whoever to move it to accommodate your new construction that happened all the time.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Okay, so we'd be at approval of a purchase of a fuel system software from Illinois Oil Marketing Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $16,673. Trustee Goff had asked for a motion to approve this?
I would make a motion to approve the purchase of the fuel system software from Illinois Oil Marketing.
Second?
Second.
Go ahead, Trustee Goff.
The, the system that the village is using down there is probably pretty close to 20 years old. And this, as I looked this over, it's, it's software and there is some hardware associated with it. I know that from my discussions with administration, the system isn't working well enough to provide the information that they need about fuel consumption, et cetera. So it's definitely something that needs to be taken care of. It's, it's a must do, so.
Questions?
Was this something that kind of just came up, or is this like a budgeted item that we knew was gonna come up this year?
We knew that was coming up this year. This, we discussed this probably a year and a half ago. We thought maybe the system wouldn't even last that long, but we were lucky enough to have it last this long. We knew this was coming.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, approval of purchase for curb sidewalk and inlet repair at Marietta and Columbus from CNG Concrete Construction Company in the amount not to exceed $30,000. Trustee Goff had asked for a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the curb and sidewalk, sidewalk and inlet repair at Marietta and Columbus.
Second?
Second.
All right, go ahead, Trustee Goff.
The situation that we have there, I went by myself and looked at it. It's, it's looking pretty rough. The, there's a lot of water that's, that is drained actually right through that, that catch basin. It's very deep. The piping that's closer to the surface is, is failing and, and causing the catch basin and the curbing and the sidewalk all around it to fail. It definitely is something that needs to be replaced. There's a high cost associated with this, and I'm sure that a lot of that has to do with the fact that because we're right on a corner, we're gonna have to have ADA sidewalk compliance, and that's going to affect what it costs the village to, to take care of that.
Is that the one right there on the corner of Heritage Square that's all sunk in with the homes?
Yes, yes.
Anyone else?
Trustee Goff, I thank you. I think curbs and sidewalks, that's something that our residents really appreciate attention to. My only question is maybe to you or to administrator something, are we, are we familiar with this contractor? Are they somebody that we routinely work with? Do we know their work product?
Yes, we've, I know that we've used them in the past, and their work has been, been quality for us. I wanted to also mention too that the funds for this come from the BDD.
Another reason to support the BDD. As we said, and I'm not being smart or funny, the rising tide really does lift all boats, and this is money that we use in a lot of very creative ways. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, approval of purchase for an inlet repair at 4425 Prospect Road to CNG Concrete Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $10,000. Trustee Goff, I would ask for a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of an inlet repair at 4425 Prospect Road.
Second, please?
Second.
All right, go ahead, Trustee Goff.
This inlet is right in front of the main entrance and to save a lot. It's been covered with a sheet of steel here lately, so you may have seen it driving. I know that in the past, the village itself has worked on that catch basin a couple of times. It's, it's on a main road. It receives a lot of traffic, and it really does need a professional repair at this point. The shallower depth would explain a lower cost of repair as compared to the, the repair that's being done at Marietta and Columbus. Or, sorry, Marietta and, where are we? Is it Columbus? Yeah, okay, right, it is Columbus. So, the, with that, with that lower cost of repair, and also as a BDD situation, BDD project, we could, we should definitely take care of this.
Thank you. Questions? All right, good job of explaining that, Trustee Goff. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. The last piece of business is approval of an agreement with Maurer Stutz Incorporated in the amount of $33,500 for the Lake Avenue Water Main Replacement Engineering. Trustee Goff had asked for a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion to approve the agreement with Maurer Stutz for $33,500.
And a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Trustee Goff.
This is the engineering for replacement of a water main that's on East Lake Street that goes underneath the walking trail and onto the Peoria Country Club. It's, that main, the main that exists there now was installed in 1937. It's cast iron. It's coming to the end of its life. I know that the Public Works Department has replaced about 90 feet further along on East Lake Street to, because of, of the poor condition of the main. So this is definitely something that needs to be taken care of. It's, this main not only feeds the country club, it also continues on as a transmission main that connects into Grandview Drive on the other side of the golf course.
And filling in tonight for Supernatural Chandler is Public Works Foreman Jim Bartley. Jim, I know you've spent a lot of time over on this main.
Yes, we have.
Can you tell the board what, about some of the breaks we've?
I think we've had five breaks since February. We've been able to isolate that main because there's no services on it, which has given us some relief in the repair. But the, the last piece that we cut out was actually a 128 feet of main we replaced, and it was in Boston, 1937. It's old and it's brittle. Every time we make pressure changes, we make a repair, and it breaks again that afternoon. So it's just a, it's become a never-ending battle that I don't think we can win.
Okay, before I go for questions, Stephen, did you want to address the board? I think, I'm sure you're here for this agenda item.
My name's Steve Kerr with Moore &amp; Kerr Engineering, address 5703 North Woodland Court, and I'm here to represent the country club. There is, in the section of main on lake, that loops into the main on Grand, and correct me if I misspeak on what I'm saying, but there's a section of that water main right now that's currently shut down, and the country club's pump house line runs into that, that piece section that's, that's shut off on Lake Street. So what has happened is that there is a limited source of water that comes off of the Grandview main. And what we're finding out is, and I don't think anybody anticipated, I don't think the Heights anticipated it or the country club anticipated it. What is happening is, right now, the golf course has 1,400 sprinkler heads, and it's designed to run with 25 or 30 of them at any given time. And with the water shut off at lake, we can only run six sprinkler heads at a time, at the most. So that's greatly impacting the ability to take care of the golf course, which, I mean, the golf course is a country club. That's how we attract new members. That's how, you know, if it's dried up and we can't water it, people leave, people are unhappy, and it just makes it hard to run the club the way that they want to. The country club buys about, correct me if I'm wrong here, $35,000 to $40,000 worth of water to sprinkle through, throughout the year, the last few years, I believe that's what it's been. And not having this, this loop, this, this loop in, we also believe that if we can only run four sprinklers, the end of Grandview Drive probably doesn't have a whole lot of fire protection on the fire hydrants down there. And I don't, I don't know if that's the case, because I haven't flowed a hydrant, but my guess, if we can only run four, six sprinklers, we probably don't have enough water to fight a fire. We have looked into alternate sources. I've called Illinois American. Illinois American has some mains closed. We thought we had a temporary solution to loop into Illinois American's mains. They have an issue with pressure. We've looked into other alternatives, but nothing is timely. I mean, we're in a, we're in a situation right now where the next three months, you know, we need water. And, and so what we're asking is, and I know the main is in horrible shape, but we're asking that in addition, and we're grateful that you're fixing the main because that helps us in the long run, but we're asking that you support getting this main back online for at least the summer period. And, you know, I know that's not an agenda item, but that's just what we're asking that...
Let me apologize for any inconvenience that may have occurred to you and the, and the country club. The village board is doing its best right now to address infrastructure needs that have gone overlooked over quite a long period of time. And the water infrastructure is one of those. We, incidentally, just at a great expense, hired a water consultant to come in and evaluate all the infrastructure. So Dustin, do you have any ideas how we can help in the short term while we embark on this fix?
Well, I, well, I think the only option would be the temporary fix that, that Jim had just mentioned. You know, I'm not sure what percentage, if we did fix it, that it would take or how long it would take. I really think that's the only option is...
I mean, from what I've looked, I've, I've looked at other options, because I understand the situation you're, did you have comment?
The first temporary fix is we did install a valve out in the golf course, because otherwise at this point we'd be shut off at Grandview Drive. So the village has also gone to that step to try and address this situation coming in, so we at least provide water from one direction.
Right. And, and I'm not here saying we're not getting something done. I don't think anybody anticipated, we aren't gonna have enough water to water the, the golf course, but that's the situation that we're in right now. And I, and I haven't been, I've only been involved in this in two days and been on the phone with Illinois American, and I've talked to Jim, I've talked to Dustin several times.
The estimated cost, Jim, what, what kind of a price tag are we talking, I mean, as far as the temporary fix?
The next temporary repair. If I had to, it's, it's over the side of the hill, so it's getting into a situation where we have to contract it out. It's not something we have equipment to do. We're getting close to the trail. If I had to guess, $10,000 to $12,000 to get someone to do it, my expressed concern that I spoke to him about yesterday, we've already done this five times, and it's broken five more times in the process. I just hate to see us spend the money on a project that has proven to be a failed venture at this point.
I'm trying to catch up with everything. So is there a cost of eight to 10,000 every one of those breaks?
Probably.
So we've got roughly 50,000?
We've probably got $50,000 plus the valve that we put in, in the golf course invested in this already.
So the, how long would it take, we proved this tonight, how long would it take to replace the main completely, the 33.5?
This is for engineering.
Yeah, so, so the engineering, so by the time you...
I didn't think that was enough to replace the...
If, if they came out and surveyed it tomorrow, designed it the next day, sent it in for permit, you're 30 to 60 days at a bare minimum to get a permit. You'd have to bid it, you'd have to award it. I would say best guess, in absolute best case, you could be putting water main in in August. But that doesn't solve, I mean, it's not like we can snap our fingers and build this main tomorrow. I mean, there's probably a way the EPA would approve an emergency install, but it's not engineered and it's not, you're not in a position to do this tomorrow.
Well, even if we were to temporarily fix it, that doesn't mean it's, it's not gonna break, and we're gonna be at the same...
Exactly.
Right. And what we're asking is, I mean, we're paying $40,000 a year in, in water that you're not gonna sell. Can we use that to try to at least, and Jim, it may break the next day. I don't know that. Granted, breaks happen more in the winter, but, but, you know, nothing keeps it from breaking again. And, but in the meantime, you know, we look at it as we're a paying customer and we need the water. If we were a hospital, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation. And we're not a hospital, we're a bunch of golfers. So, I mean, it's a totally different thing, but, you know, we're a customer and we're, we're asking that you guys, you know, you're a public water supply, and we're just asking that you guys, you know, do what you can to keep us in business.
Is, is it the amount of water, or is it the pressure of the water that's the issue?
The amount.
The amount. Has Chief Thompson expressed any concerns about fire coverage?
No.
Okay.
I think some of the problem with that is they're at the very end of the main now because of the valve we put in on the golf course.
Okay.
It's shut off there so that we're not leaking on Lake Street.
Okay.
Yeah, and so probably up here on your fine, as you get to the very end of Grandview, you may have some, and I'm just speculating, you have some fire flow issues at the very end of Grandview.
I have a question. So the, I noticed, and I, I think I know exactly where all these leaks were happening. One on Lake right at the, basically where Peoria Heights meets Peoria over there at the top of the hill, and then it cut across the golf course, right smack into the golf course. And then there was one right on Grandview Drive before and out, right off of the golf pro shop, I think, right there. And that's where, that's where it was cut, right? Is that where they just turned it off?
Go ahead, Ned.
The...
He's shaking his head, no, is it?
The break on Grandview Drive was unrelated. That was actually... That was actually part of the country club's old irrigation system that was leaking. The break on the golf course was newer plastic main that had not been installed right and separated. The five breaks that are, the problem that we're speaking of are between the pump house and our next valve on Lake, which would be at the Shaky Oak intersection, I believe.
So right before Lake turns into Harvard.
So this, this pipe, you said some places since the 1930s, has the golf course been reliant upon this? I guess, I guess that, they've been reliant upon this pipe since inception?
That is incorrect. The portion of pipe that runs, well, that section, yes, there's also, the other side where we're supplying the pressure now is newer and plastic.
Initially, initially, the main was installed to supply the golf course in 1937.
So what are our options right now to deal with this issue for the next three months?
We could continue to chase our tails and see if it holds water. I don't have very much confidence in that at this point, Tom.
So if approved tonight, this engineering piece, how, how long do you expect that to take?
I have not spoken to him. I know Chris has headed that up as far as the engineering side of it. Trustee Goff, maybe he will answer that better than I can.
I, I am not clear either. I couldn't give you a concrete answer, but certainly it'll be months.
I would guess, you're probably, if you...
The EPA likes to drag their feet on stuff like this for making, making approval. We might get, as he mentioned, an emergency approval, but they're not a hospital, they're a golf course.
Yeah, I mean, my guess is, is if you gave this to our firm, we'd be, we'd send plans to the EPA in 45 days. You know, it's not something we're gonna turn around and apply for a permit in two weeks. And I would assume Maurer Stutz is the same, you know, we would appreciate you putting... The, the problem is, is no matter what you do right now, it's not gonna help us this summer. You know, in other words, if, if they did it in two weeks and you got a permit in a month and you could start putting pipe in the ground in July, you're not gonna have that pipe permitted and up and running till after we're done sprinkling. I mean, that's the reality of where we're at.
Here's my question.
Yeah, we could.
This has been an ongoing problem, clearly. We fixed it five times. So we've made the decision before this evening to just keep repairing it and waited until now to hire Maurer Stutz. So wouldn't it seem that we should continue to repair it as best we can to get through the season and obviously approve this Maurer Stutz vote for this evening?
I think we have two options. One, proceed with the agenda item, and I know that's not, that does not help them out. The other option is to give it one more try. And I think if the board decides that's the direction they wanna take it, that everybody's open to, it might not take, it might...
Yeah, I mean, we're not, I can't predict when a main's gonna break and I can tell you it's gonna break, more likely to break in the winter, but that doesn't mean the minute you turn it back on, it's not gonna split 10 feet from where we fixed it.
I think the board has, that's the only option they have. Trustee Kazam is either give it one more try and see if they could get them through the summer until we can get this, you know...
It's like it's a parallel decision, like it's, is it... Can we approve this and do that, like approve it, approve this? Okay, so we approve to try, right, one more time to fix it? If that fails, we instantly have already approved this so we can get moving on it? We don't have to wait until the next...
No, we're, yeah, I, I would recommend definitely moving forward on that item.
Okay.
This is, this is, I think this is just another layer to that.
Okay, I, just the way it was worded, I thought you were saying like one...
Here's, here's what I, I'd like to do. I'd like you all to approve this tonight. We can put an agenda item on the next board meeting. And in the meantime, that'd give Dustin and Trustee Goff and Public Works a chance to, to talk about this and collaborate with you and see if we can come up with a solution. And we may put something on the, the next agenda for you to take action on if you so choose.
Well, Chief, I, I had a question for council. It's, it's just a repair of an existing pipe. Is that something that they, needs board approval?
I don't believe it does.
Okay. Okay, so you want us to have conversation, Mayor, regarding, look at all the options and moving forward?
Well, I think some, looking around the room here, I, I believe everyone sitting here sympathizes with the predicament you're in and that we wanna try and find a way to resolve that. Some may be of the mind that, yes, we need to spend the money to take care of the problem, but I, I don't know that there's a majority to keep, you know, putting a Band-Aid on something, a $10,000 Band-Aid, that doesn't make...
My, my recommendation, if we, if we try it, would be one more time. I would say, I mean, I'm, I'm following Jim's lead. He's given me, you know, the historical background on it and it doesn't look good, but could it be something that it takes for a few months and gets us through? It could. You know, I think that's the question, that do we wanna give it one more shot?
Well, what was, what was the duration between the breaks?
The longest was a week.
A week?
So these five repairs have been done in the last...
I don't have to look, I can tell you when the first one happened.
Jim, was that a dead a winter? Was it?
Trustee Wigington, do you have a question?
All right, yeah, thank you. So I, I agree with, with Trustee Kazam, with administrator Sutton. I, I don't think we've ever, with the five breaks that have happened on the golf course, on Lake, on the other side of Lake where we've had valves break and things, I, I don't anticipate Public Works waiting for the next village board meeting to, to fix the problem. So I, I think taking the initiative to, to fix this issue. The golf course is, you know, the business is contingent really upon watering the grass. And if they can't water the grass, then they, they don't really have a business. And so they're the largest water customer for the water department. So I, I, I agree with the sentiment that I'm hearing that we give it a shot and see if we can get through the summer and by that point we'll have our study, our water study done and we'll know a lot more about the situation we're dealing with on a, you know, forest rather than the trees perspective.
I would like to go ahead and pass this agenda and get started and fix, give it one last shot, but let's get this agenda going, what's on the meeting, get that passed and go ahead and have the guys fix it, see if it'll last. But this needs to be passed and that needs, we need to try and fix it. That's all I gotta say.
Mayor, I, I know the Open Meetings Act does not prohibit motions from being introduced. Do we just wanna say, let's repair it and be done with it or...
I'm hearing a consensus, if you wanna tell the administrator to have Public Works out there this week to repair it.
Yeah.
I, I say we fix it.
But that's not a vote, he can spend the money.
Right.
I didn't think it was necessary to have a meeting in order to, in the, fix it.
You think it's worth it, to repair?
Absolutely, we should repair it.
Yeah, okay. I'm okay with it, Mayor.
Any one of... Any objections?
No.
All right, we'll keep chatting with you no matter what happens.
And if it's any help on your decisions in the future, Illinois American said they could serve us if they interconnected with your system.
Okay.
So, I know that doesn't help us now, but...
All right, back to the main motion. Any other questions on the engineering piece? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gat?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. We would be at miscellaneous business. Any miscellaneous business come for the board?
I would just like to say one thing, just to commend the Public Works because a water customer had a problem with their sump pump constantly running and it turned out it was coming from the village water and, but it's been going on for three, four weeks. All right, Jim?
I believe it's been going on since February.
Yeah, oh, that's right, February.
We were made aware three weeks ago.
Yeah, it's been going on, that's my brother, so anyhow. They found it, they didn't, they didn't just blow it off. They were diligent about finding what the problem was, they found it. This is on Friday afternoon. They stayed till 11 o'clock and remedied the problem. Both, there was a neighbor who had a problem when they discovered it, got it, got it fixed. Situation's well underhand and they did a good job and I just wanna give them kudos for doing a job well done.
Thanks for bringing that up and just to point out the typical day of a Public Works employee, Jim worked all day and your crew was called out after work on, on this water main break, right?
Yes, sir.
You fixed the water main break and about, I think midnight, I was going down Prospect and there, you and the crew were closing down the street for the art fair, so about 16, 18 hours later, so...
It was a long day.
We have a small crew that does great work. All right, any other miscellaneous?
So if American Water were to interconnect, they'd still use the same...
All right, we'd be at payment of the bills.
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Any questions on any of the bills or discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gat?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, the bills are paid. We'd be at the treasurer's report.
As of the end of April, in the village-controlled account, there was $5,307,677.70. In the water-controlled accounts, there was $1,827,388.33.
You've heard the treasurer's report, I'd ask for a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Approve it.
Have a motion, a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion or comments on the report? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Trustee Gat?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigington?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, we're adjourned.